This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Kettering City Council. Today's date is September 24, 2024. Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. As we come together this evening, let us all remember that we are here to work together and make wise decisions for the good of our community. I'd like to recognize Mike Zuproni, the Miami Valley Communications Council TV operator and our timekeeper up there. Thanks for your assistance as always, Mike. I'd like to call on Mrs. Fisher right now for a motion to approve the minutes.
Your Honor, I did review both the council meeting and workshop minutes for September the 10th, 2024. I do find them order and I move their approval.
Second.
The motion has been seconded. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, then call a roll.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Mr. Suddith?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes. Okay. We have one appointment this evening. It's to the Board of Community Relations, Andrea Perkins, for a term ending 12/31/26. Andrea, are you here?
I did not see you.
Did not see you. Okay. Well, we will make sure that she is now official and we'll start attending those meetings. One of our favorite nights of the year is the presentation of the Neighborhood Pride Awards. And we have lots of reward recipients -- can't talk -- in the room tonight. And we're glad that they're able to join us as we go through all these beautiful properties, which we are so appreciative of. Kettering always looks great. And particularly those people who make that extra effort to do so. So I'm going to turn it over to Dawn at this point. Dawn's in charge of the program. And take it away.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor Lehner, and members of City Council. We appreciate your continued support and enthusiasm for this program. The Neighborhood Pride Award is an annual tradition that recognizes property owners who have made significant improvements to the appearance of their homes or businesses or who have made great efforts to maintain their property impeccably year after year. In May, all Kettering property owners received information in contact with Kettering asking for nominations for this award. And nominations were available at various locations throughout the city, including the Government Center, Recreation Center, and Charles Lathrum Senior Center. Nominations were also accepted online and by phone. This year, over 250 nominations were received, and all were reviewed by our dedicated Neighborhood Pride Committee. A winner is selected from each of our 12 districts in June, July, and August, as well as one commercial property being recognized as a Neighborhood Pride Award winner each month. And this is our second year for recognizing a sustainable landscaping award. So one award goes to a business or resident each year for that. This popular program would not be possible without the help of our dedicated volunteers and our committee co-chairs. Many of them are here this evening, and I'm going to ask that they stand if they're here. So if you're a volunteer or a co-chair, Brian Moore and David Burham, Gail Carone, and Mark and Carol Messer. If you're here, please stand so we can ------ And it really is a lot of time and commitment that goes into viewing all of these properties. So again, when I say over 250 nominations, our volunteers go out and view every single property. So it is a great deal of work. So we are going to watch a fantastic video. So Carlos Sukamel from the Miami Valley Communications Council works on this every year. He always does a fantastic job, and we always appreciate the care and the dedication that he takes into putting this together. So as we do play the video, for our award winners that are here tonight, we ask that you stand while your property is shown so we know who you are and we can kind of give you some accolades at the end. So with that, we'll go ahead and watch the video.[315.77]
So congratulations to all of our winners. This video is going to be available through the city's website for future viewing. And I have to say, every year that I've been a part of this program, I think I've got my yard perfected. And then I watch the video and I tour everybody's backyards and front yards and I realize I always have so much more work to do. But that's a true gardener. The work is never done. So thank you to everybody for the wonderful inspiration. So before we begin with the awards, I just want to remind all of our award winners that you're invited to attend a reception in the lower level of the government center following the awards presentation. But the sound carries very well in this building. So as we're transitioning out, please remember to do so quietly because this meeting will continue.
Because we'll still be working, right?
Yeah. This meeting continues.
But you're eating cake.
We don't want to, you know, we'll hear. And we will hear if they hear us. So as we get started, I'd like to introduce Lindsay Curry, Assistant Volunteer Administrator. She's the one who really works directly with our volunteer committees and co-chair members and coordinates with our winners for all of the filming. So Lindsay's going to be calling out the winners to have them come up to receive their certificates and I'm just going to take the pictures.
Thank you. Would all of the June winners, please stand and make your way to the side of the seating If you have guests with you that you would like to include in the photo, please have them come with you. When we finish with June, we will move on to July, then August. I will announce each winner to move forward and receive their award and have a photo taken with Mayor Lehner. Then you may return to your seat. We will send these photos to you.
Do they know their month that they won?
They just saw them on the...
Okay.
First up, we have District 5 with Anthony and Joni Kralik. Next, we'll move on to the July winners. If you can make your way over to the side, please.
Go to, you can go to the basement. Go straight to the basement. There's goodies down there.
First up, we have District 1 with Steve and Lisa Morgan. District 9 Cody and Cara McMillan.
And they're helpers.
If I may, I want to make a quick comment about these folks at 2805 Hilton. I grew up in that neighborhood and rode my bike past that house thousands of times. It looks nothing like it did when I was a kid. Well done.
Our commercial property Tammy Holmes Realty. Next, we're going to move on to the August winners. We have District 2 with Richard and Megan DelGrosso. District 3 Neil and Barbara Charski.
Can I just make a comment? When this guy's not busy gardening, putting on the largest cross country music in Kettering, America.
And I'd like to add, I would like to add another comment. I have had the pleasure of seeing their property and the way that house looks to the original structure, you would not even believe it's the same house. It is amazing.
District 7 Jonathan and Jeanette Hobbs. District 12 Paula Dixon. We like the shirt. And our Sustainable Landscape Award this year went to Christ United Methodist Church. Is there anyone here that did not get their award? All right, we will now transition downstairs for the reception. Again, please lower your voices to a minimum so we do not disturb the meeting.
Just don't talk at all. Don't talk at all.
It kept wobbling.
Yeah. It won't use.
We give everyone a chance to walk in. Folks here. Yeah. Okay, we'll come back to order. We neglected to take a vote on the appointment of Andrea Perkins, so I'd like to go ahead and do that at this point. Do we need a motion?
Motion to accept Andrea.
Second.
Okay. Call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher? Yes. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
We do, at this point, have public comment on any legislation that we're dealing with tonight. We went from a full house to an empty house. I don't assume that there's anyone wishing to speak, however, anyone who does wish to speak before council with comments or new information about the legislation on tonight's agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker's limited to five minutes. Speakers must state their name and address and comments should be addressed to council. If you have comments that are not about the legislation on tonight's agenda, there will be an opportunity for those to be heard later in the meeting. Okay, we will now move on to the agenda. There are no public hearings this evening. We have no ordinances in second reading. I'd like to call in Mrs. Fisher to start the resolutions.
Your Honor, I do have a resolution setting October 8th, 2024, as the hearing date for the appeal in the Planning Commission case number PC 24-005. It is requested by the council office and I move for approval.
Second.
Mr. Chedowski?
Yes, Your Honor.
I'm going to butcher your name at least once with...
Just fine, ma'am. But this resolution will set October 8th, 2024, as the hearing date for the appeal in Planning Commission case PC 24005. Codified Ordinance Section 1153.15.3 allows City Council to extend the 45-day hearing deadline for hearing appeals of the Planning Commission's decisions. This resolution will set October 8th, 2024, as the hearing date before City Council in the appeal of Planning Commission's decision in case number PC 24005. Happy to answer any questions the council may have, ma'am.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, hearing done. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Fisher? Yes. Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for snow and ice removal services at city facilities during the 2024 to 2025 season. The estimated cost and the amount budgeted is $126,000 and it is requested by the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. I move for approval.
Second. Brian?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize the city manager to use competitive bargaining and negotiated quotes to contract for snow and ice removal services at city facilities during the 2024 and 2025 season. The snow and ice removal contract will include the Kettering Business Park, all city fire stations, the government center and other city facilities. The contract will allow our contractor, will allow for the contractor to be responsible for the removal of snow and ice at various parks, recreation and cultural arts facilities in the event additional support is required, ensuring that our apparatus remain out on the roads doing what they do best. Happy to answer any questions or concerns the council may have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant from the State Homeland Security Program for the purchase of a mobile barrier system. The estimated amount is for $150,000 and this is being requested by the police department. Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, Brian?
Thank you, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize the city manager to apply for a grant from the State Homeland Security Program for the purchase of a mobile barrier system. The 2024 State Homeland Security Program grant provides up to $200,000 in funding for approved projects that support terrorism preparedness. The Kettering Police Department has created a proposal to purchase a mobile barrier system designed by Meridian Rapid Defense Group. The system can be deployed at various events and venues throughout the year to provide added security for those in attendance. The current proposal includes a cost estimate of $126,645.45, but who's counting? However, a maximum of $150,000 is being requested to cover potential cost increases leading up to the time of the grant's approval. A date for the project approval has not been provided. If approved, the project is expected to be fully implemented no later than the end of 2025. And once approved, the cost of the project will be initially funded by the city but reimbursed in its entirety by the grant program. Chief Protsman, anything to add with regards to this particular piece of legislation?
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. This is just something that we thought would be an added security for the events that we have with the large crowds and things are going on around the country. So we thought it'd be worthwhile to put in for this grant to see if we could get it accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Your Honor, I have a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a final agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for ODOT Project MOT SR 48-835 6.49-1.48, which is Far Hills Avenue SLM 6.49 to SLM 6.95 and Research Boulevard SLM 1.48 to SLM 1.65 and SLM 1.65 to SLM 2.81 within the city of Kettering. Estimated cost is $442,624. There is more than that budgeted and this is requested by the engineering department. I do move for approval.
Second. Brian?
Yes, Your Honor. This resolution will authorize the city manager to enter into a final agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for Project MOT State Route 48, 835, 6.49 through 1.48, Far Hills Avenue, single lane mile 6.49 to single lane mile 6.95 and Research Park Boulevard single lane mile 1.48 to single lane mile 1.65 and single lane mile 1.65 to single lane mile 2.81, all within the city of Kettering. This resolution will authorize the city manager to enter into agreement with ODOT to perform asphalt resurfacing to sections of State Route 48 and State Route 835. The section of State Route 48, Far Hills Avenue, is approximately from David Road to Talawanda Trail and the section of State Route 835, Research Boulevard, is from Woodman Drive to County Line Road, including short sections beyond each intersection. ODOT will contribute 80% of the resurfacing portion of the project cost with the city contributing 20% of the resurfacing portion of the project. Prepayment invoice from ODOT is for $442,642. ODOT will bid the project this October and the project will be constructed in the 2025 construction season. Staff is happy to answer any questions or concerns the council may have on this legislation.
I'd just like to commend both of you for getting through that ordinance.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well done. Call the roll. Did you have a question?
Statement.
Mr. Scott?
I attribute my oratorical skills to the city of Kettering school system. Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
I have a resolution authorizing the rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying same to the Montgomery County and Green County auditors. This is requested by the Finance Department and I move for approval.
Second.
All right, Brian?
Yes, this particular resolution will authorize the city manager to accept the rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying the same to Montgomery and Green County auditors. This is annual reoccurring legislation before this body accepting the city's property tax rates. It is required by Montgomery County, Green County and the Ohio Vice Code to occur annually. This does not represent any new or increase in taxes. Staff is happy to answer any questions or concerns the council may have at this time.
Any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Ms. DuVal?
No. Yes, I'm sorry.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. DuVal?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Okay, we have no ordinances in first reading this evening. Do we have any certifications and petitions, Mrs. Haslam?
We have no certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll now turn to the managers' report and I'm going to call in the Assistant City Manager, Brian Chakowsky.
Thank you again, Mayor. Just for the... the amount of $35,390. It is associated with improvements to State Route 835. The work involved median contraction, or shrinking the medians, in and around Research Boulevard at College Drive to improve truck and vehicular traffic onto Research Boulevard from College Drive. Staff is happy to answer any questions or concerns the council may have.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Suddeth?
Yes.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duval?
Yes.
Mayor Lehner?
Yes.
Okay, we have no ordinances in first reading this evening. Do we have any certifications and petitions, Mrs. Haslam?
We have no certifications or petitions this evening.
Okay, thank you. We'll now turn to the manager's report, and I'm going to call in the Assistant City Manager, Brian Chakowsky.
Thank you again, Mayor. Just for the community's benefit, I want to call to mind some important activities and dates that should be on everyone's calendars. First, I'd like to point to this Saturday is our Shred Day and Styrofoam Recycling Event, which will be held from 9:00 AM until noon in the Fairmont High School parking lot on Troyer. We encourage everybody to bring their unneeded check stubs and checkbook ledgers out to this event, along with their no-longer-needed summer styrofoam coolers. This month, we are celebrating Hispanic Month, Hispanic Heritage Month here in the city, and we have a wonderful artistic event for children of all ages currently underway. There is a grade competition for poster contests, and that's for students from kindergarten through 5th grade, and there is also a poster contest for students in 6th through 12th grade. Cash prizes are awarded to the top three winners in both categories, and submission dates are October 11th for these particular events. The artwork submitted will be exhibited at Rosewood Art Center from October 21st to October 26th, and the award ceremony itself will occur on Saturday, October 26th. More information about the program can be accessed by visiting the city's website, and we would encourage folks to visit specifically the Board of Community Relations subpage on that city website for more information about this program. Everybody's fall... Favorite fall exercise event is now underway, and that is leaf raking and yard blowing, and your leaves and yard debris can be blown for pickup beginning on October 21st, starting in District 1, and we will continue to make our way about the city until all of those pesky leaves are up and off of the yard and out of the gutter plates. Coming up on Saturday, October 26th, so about a month from now, we will be participating in a DEA Drug Takeback Program. Folks are encouraged to bring their outdated or unused drugs to the Kettering Police Department on Saturday, October 26th, from 10:00 AM until 2:00 PM, right here at 3600 Troyer Road. Also coming up in October, very busy month for us, is Make a Difference Day. On that same date, October 26th, the city will be participating with thousands of people across the country in what is the largest day of service in our country. On that particular day, there will be four different activities for our community volunteers to participate in, including a rain garden installation at Van Buren Park, community yard assistance, holiday greeting cards, and then blankets for Project Linus. More information about this particular program and these opportunities can be learned by visiting our website and scrolling down to the volunteer page, or by calling our volunteer office at 296-2433. On October 31st, just a few days later, my favorite day is when my children go out and get all of the chocolate for my wife and I for the remainder of the year. That is Beggar's Night, October 31st, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We ask everybody to be mindful of all the little ones that will be out and about on that evening, and best of luck to those with the most chocolate in their bag. That's all I have for council this evening, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Lots of things happening this month, like you said. We will now move to city council reports, but before we do that, if there's anyone who would like to speak before city council at this point, please come down to the podium. Each speaker will have a five-minute limit. Speakers are asked to state their name and address. Is there anyone who would like to speak before city council? Not seeing anyone, we will move on to city council reports, and we will start with Mrs. Fisher.
So it has been a very busy few weeks, ma'am, with you gone. On the 14th, similar to what Brian was just talking about, where there's three events in one day, on the 14th of September, I started my morning with recognizing 60 coaches that are coaching our kids in soccer. So we have a very robust volunteer program with those coaches. Moved over to EcoFest, and I know there were a few of us that did show up at the EcoFest. I know Bob and Shane is one who were there. Finished that night with the Fairmont Classic Band Competition, and I just have to say, it was a beautiful, cool evening after being very warm that day. Amazed to see teeny-tiny little bands like Kalida, saw Tecumseh's doing Styx music, which was awesome. And then I will say, I did not stay for the full six hours to see our own Fairmont band perform, but I have seen them in the past, and it's amazing to hear people around you just go, "Look at those trucks of equipment." And that's exactly what our band takes with them, and they are large and in charge, and I know it was a great event. I'm on the bike committee, and I will tell you, our bike committee has been hard at work prioritizing the needs around our city, about what streets need to be improved, working with other communities around us to do connections with our bike paths, and actually helping writing out some of our strategic goals, which is about engaging and having an active lifestyle. So I'm really proud that they are getting their hands dirty and getting real involved in the strategic process. Last but not least, we have opened a couple of... One business reopening with Dunkin' Donuts, and then I appreciate Mr. Scott being at the fiscal therapy, fiscal physical... It's probably than half. They are opening a new place, worrying about balance and fiscal therapy, a great new business to our community, and I appreciate them bringing it here to Kettering. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Neil Sharsky was here tonight, one of our Neighborhood Pride Award winners, and I was going to talk about the Neil Sharsky Invitational, which was the cross-country meet.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Which is, I think, a great example of how well our city and our school works together, sharing that space for that cross-country meet. There were a couple hiccups on the school district needed assistance from the city, and the city was quick to come in, respond, and help out. So I love seeing the two organizations work so well together. Shred Day is another good example of, you know, Fairmont letting us use their space, so it's a great partnership. And keeping on the school theme, we had Spirit Week last week, which is Spirit Chain. We do the fundraiser, and we compete with Centerville on the football field and fundraising. And the two schools combined for about $229,000 this year that went to charity. So, you know, they just beat us on the football field, and they raised a little bit more money this year, but it's still like a great, you know, friendly rivalry where we can help... We helped three charities in Kettering. I think they do the same in Centerville, three charities that the student body picks, so... Just good stuff happening with the school and the city. And I was going to say, as the sustainability liaison, council liaison to the Sustainability Committee, EcoFest was great. Part of our strategic plan is there's an education component to sustainability. They do a great job of that at that event. And we got three free Halloween costumes. Instead of them going in the trash, I... Carrie Miles talked about that at our last meeting, but such a good idea. There are so many good things that happened at that. It was a great event. That's it for me.
A couple years ago, I was asked to lead Welcome Dayton's Initiative to take their work out into the whole county, and so Welcome Dayton is an organization that helps people who have emigrated to the city to assimilate in jobs and education and life. And so the last two years with the committee to take it to the whole county, I've had the opportunity to go to different cities in our county and listen to people who've emigrated here and how their needs are being mattered, the assimilating, and overwhelmingly, people are having a positive experience in Montgomery County, and it's been really a blessing to hear that. Kettering Listening Session for people who've emigrated specifically to Kettering is coming up on October 10th at 6:00 PM, and it is going to be here at the Government Center in the Deeds Room. And this is a serious topic these days, as legal immigrants have unfortunately become nationally unwelcome only 25 minutes from our city. I had the opportunity to be aware of the Haitian diaspora through my day job with Care Portal and my colleagues work there, and Haitians were initially invited to Springfield to fill jobs, which they have done amazingly and incredible work ethic, and the complaints initially started because Haitians were getting all the promotions. But unfortunately, as most people are aware, fear and hate stoked from political theater intended to motivate people towards hate, towards political ideologies that are troubling have made new Americans unwelcome in a neighboring county. There's also been an amazing outpouring of churches and individuals who have helped this community there, and the reality is, is that refugees have produced a net asset of $124 billion to the U.S. economy, and that's apart from people who have newly become Americans. So I hope that those who would like to help legal immigrants to Kettering feel welcome, and refugees feel welcome, still join me here in two weeks to learn from our foreign-born neighbors and how we can engage our whole community for the good of each other. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Jill.
Well, to add a little bit on the theme of Fairmont and schools and whatever, commentary. The original Fairmont School, the Fairmont East Falcons, and the recombined Fairmont Firebirds have never had an undefeated 10-0 season. However, the 1974 Fairmont West Dragons were 10-0, won the Western Ohio League, coached by Dick Hoppy, and the 50-year reunion of that team is going to be honored at halftime at the football game against Miami'sburg this Friday. So hats off to the only 10-0 football team this city's ever produced.
Oh, was that all? Okay.
That's enough.
That is enough. I don't have committee updates. There hasn't been a lot going on committee-wise, but I want to thank the Parks Department. They gave my dog the best day ever on last Saturday with the... Was it Canine Cannonball at the rec? It was the last day the pools opened, and the dogs can all go and swim. It's heaven. You just watch dogs run around in plain water. It was amazing. And then we went... She and I went over to EcoFest, and while we were there, we walked by where they do the Halloween costumes. They turned my dog into a little octopus. It was amazing. So it was my dog's best day. So they were both great events, and I'm so thrilled to attend them, and that's all I have.
As a liaison to the Board of Community Relations, VCR, we're excited to have Andrea Perkins join the team as a member of VCR. There's still a couple vacancies left, and we're always looking for more volunteers to fill those spots. They also spent this month's meeting finalizing the awards for the Good Neighbor Award and a record number of submissions, and it's gotten a little nerdy, a lot of spreadsheets, a lot of scoring, but they've made some decisions and we look forward to announcing those soon. And just a reminder, back to Brian Chedowski's comments about Hispanic Heritage Month, that our contest, sponsored by Rosewood and VCR, continues to the 11th of this month. And also, one reminder, there's the Drug Takeback on the 26th of October, but I would... Only because I was there recently, you don't have to wait till the 26th. I know it's cool. There's going to be a lot of people there. It's going to be neat. But anytime you walk to the lobby, even on a Sunday morning walk, you can press the buzzer, you come into the lobby, just drop it in the box in the corner, no questions asked, it's very easy, and if you had a lot of old meds that you wanted to get rid of quietly, by yourself perhaps on a Sunday morning walk, maybe, you can just slide over there. Anytime you want, the box is accessible just behind the door, so you don't have to wait till the 26th. And that's all I have. It's very easy, so don't wait till the 26th. Get them out of your house, take them to the box. It's always there.
Thank you, Brian. I don't have a whole lot tonight, largely because I hope nobody didn't notice that I wasn't here for the last month. I had the wonderful opportunity to go to South Africa for three and a half weeks, and it was an incredible trip. But I want to thank Jackie for filling in so ably, and I know it was a busy, busy time, and... But no one does it better than you do, so I didn't have to worry about the city one bit. Yeah. Now, the only thing I'm left with in addition to hundreds and hundreds of pictures, if you'd like to look at them, is a box full of drugs that I was going to take if I got cholera, typhoid, all of those other things. Didn't need any of them, but I guess you're just going to throw them out, so I better save them for someone who might need them. So, anyway. With that, thanks for being here tonight, and we'll look forward to seeing you in two weeks. And with no further business to come before council, this meeting is adjourned, and we will meet again on the 8th of October.